Would like to call the order.
The May 18th meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, welcome. It's good to have such a good crowd with us tonight. I would encourage all of you to silence your noise-making devices, whether it be phones or otherwise. And at this time, I would ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're happy to have Reverend Dennis Gray from Pine Bluff United Methodist Church to deliver our invocation tonight.
Greater God, we give you thanks this evening for this opportunity to gather together. Lord, we give you thanks for each one of these that you have appointed to administer this county, Lord, and we just ask you to be with them and say make decisions that will affect how this county is run. And, Lord, we know that you have told us to follow our leaders, and, Lord, we just ask you to be with us and comfort us and give us peace with any decisions made, those we agree with and those we struggle with. Lord, be with each one here this day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Gray. We appreciate you being with us tonight. First item up is approval or correction of the minutes of our last meeting, and all of you have copies of those in front of you. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the minutes. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion passes. And now, approval of the agenda, which of course you all have a copy of, with including the changes, which I think are on page 199 on the full version.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion passes. Now we move on to a fun part of our meeting, which are recognitions and presentations. We're happy to have Brent Weisner with us tonight, and he will make a presentation.
We're here to recognize Bobby Kinsey and his pending retirement. I believe he's going to retire next Friday, is that right?
Yeah, 29th.
And Bobby has, Bobby and I worked together 40 years ago, I guess, 38, 40 years ago, when we were doing revaluation work in the private industry. And then Bobby's been with Cabarrus County now for 30, almost 30 years, be 30 years in October, I believe. But he's decided to hang it up just short of that 30 years for some rea-, I think he's got to go to the beach or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other than the fact that Bobby pulls for the Blue Devils, he's a pretty good guy. But Bobby's always done a lot of good work for us, worked hard, and turned out really good work for us, and we really appreciate all you've done for us. And I would just wish you the best in your retirement, and I believe.
I also want to wish you the best, and we have a plaque for you.
Thank you.
This way. The Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners acknowledges with sincere appreciation the dedicated service of James Bobby Kinsey, in recognition of 30 years of service to Cabarrus County and its citizens, October 1st, 1985 to May 29th, 2015.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Do you want to?
I just wanted to thank Cabarrus County for giving me the opportunity, for being employed with Cabarrus County for 30 years. I really enjoyed working with Cabarrus County for all these years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bobby, and best wishes. I think that beach trip is a valid reason.
Yes.
Next, we have Tracy LaComte from Cooperative Extension to recognize our graduating seniors from the Youth Commission.
Thank you all. I am the adult advisor for our Cabarrus County Youth Commission. We went through a name change this year to separate ourselves a little bit from the City of Concord Youth Council and maybe build up a little bit more about what we stand for. This year for the commission, our biggest thing, we went through that name change, but then we also worked really hard in partnership with our libraries. And so we have met a couple different times with our library managers and tried to get a little bit more of maybe some of the youth vision for the teen council and different things that the library's been working on. And we've also amped up our community involvement this year. So we have gone out and explored a lot of different places. A big thanks to Chris Meesmer for helping us out and Grace Minnet for coming to our meetings and helping our youth to explore some of the things in the community. We have eight commissioners who are ending their term this June, and we would like to thank them and ask them to come forward to be recognized. Please join me in recognizing Michael Walker, our current president, if you'll come forward, and Mason Zagoda as well. These are two of our graduating seniors. I'm going to offer them to come up and give a little bit of an end-of-the-year report.
My name is Michael Walker, and I'm the president of the Cabarrus County Youth Commission. This past year has been one of the most productive years in the history of the Youth Commission. We started this year by defining a very specific goal for the year: to learn more about local government and how youth can be a part of it. Throughout this year, we have visited several different departments within local government, such as the Board of Elections and the Health Department, and we have learned a lot about how local government works. Each department that we've visited also had volunteer opportunities for youth that we did not know about prior to visiting them. In addition to visiting these different departments, we also attended several different 4-H leadership conferences throughout the state. Earlier this year, the Youth Commission decided to take a very active role in the changing policies of the Cabarrus County library system. This initiative was spearheaded by one of our most passionate members, Mason Zagoda. I'm now going to yield to her to let her talk about that.
Hi, my name is Mason Zagoda, and I'm the chairman of the Library Committee for the Cabarrus County Youth Commission. So I'm going to tell you a little bit more in-depth about what we've been doing with our library system this past year. I became involved with the Youth Commission actually through a town hall meeting, where I went and stood up and asked a question on a fairly controversial subject, the Common Core Standard, to the superintendent of North Carolina schools. And that then sparked a lot of debate between the adults that were there and the superintendent that otherwise would not have happened. And Michael Walker, our president who was there, recommended that I join the commission because what I did at that meeting is what we do, and it's what we're passionate about: finding opportunities and inspiring youth to get involved in their community and in the process of their local government. And that same passion is what inspired us as a group to come up with the idea for a youth advisory board, an opportunity for youth to get involved in their community through their local library. So the Library Committee, which includes myself and Mariana Mendez, who couldn't be here tonight, I don't think, we worked with Emory Ortiz and Kyle White to create the Youth Advisory Board, which is a combination of volunteer work for the library, helping out in practical ways, but then also works as a kind of think tank to create ideas as to how the library can reach out to youth and then helps bring those ideas to fruition. So I believe so far, the Concord and Mount Pleasant libraries are on board with this idea, and application has been created, and their start dates are sometime at the beginning of this upcoming school year. So we've already begun to see the fruits of our labor with this project, which is very exciting, and hopefully we'll continue to see it as the Youth Advisory Board spreads to all of Cabarrus County libraries, which is the plan, and we get even more teens involved in their community. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you can see, we have two very wonderful graduating seniors, and then we also have a large group that's coming in behind them. They've performed interviews and brought on some new people to recommend for you all at your next board meeting to consider them for appointment for their, for the 2015-2016 Youth Commission. So I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to work with the youth, all of them on behalf of all of our youth commissioners. Thank you all for what you do, and as we go into the next school year, we look forward to working with all of you. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say that I was at the meeting where these young people first proposed this idea, and the word that she, someone used about saying "passionate," that they really were. And if that's an example of what this commission's going to be doing, we're in for a treat, and I think we're developing people that might be sitting up here one day. And I enjoyed that meeting because former Commissioner Meesmer, who's here this evening, I think he's been highly involved and had something to do with perhaps the formation of that group. So I just wanted to recognize that as well.
Great. Thank you. You took the words right out of my mouth. I was going to say, since you are, no, no, no. No, I was going to say, since you have the title of commissioner now, and you're relinquishing it for a little while, we look forward to you being back up here with the title of commissioner. And we appreciate what you've done for Cabarrus County and hope you will continue to be involved. And best wishes on your next stop. Next up, we have from Veteran Services, Tim Tereska for a presentation.
I actually have two flags that I need to present to the, to the board this evening. The first flag was, is a North Carolina state flag. This was presented to me, and I accepted on your behalf by State Representative Larry Pittman. This flag was flown over the state Capitol in Raleigh on the 19th of November in commemoration of the dedication of the Vietnam Veterans Park we had back in November. And the certificate reads, Pat McGory, excuse me, Pat McCrory, Governor of the State of North Carolina, presents this North Carolina flag to Cabarrus County Vietnam Veterans Park by Representatives Larry Pittman, Linda Johnson, Carl Ford, and Senator Fletcher Hartzell, and certifies that it was flown over the state Capitol building on the 19th day of November 2014. And here is the state flag. I have one more flag. It's a United States flag that was given to us by the Office of Richard Hudson, Congressman Hudson. This flag was flown over the state cap-, I'm sorry, US Capitol in Washington, DC on the 15th of November, the date that we had our ceremony at the park. Citation reads, "The flag of the United States of America, this is to certify that the accompanying flag was flown over the United States Capitol on November the 15th, 2014. At the request of the Honorable Richard Hudson, Member of Congress, this flag was flown in honor of the dedication of Vietnam Veterans Park and the service of the brave soldiers from Cabarrus County who defended our freedom during the Vietnam War." And this is the flag, too. So we have a US flag and a North Carolina state flag, and both were made in United States. It says so right on the packaging. And what I would recommend with the approval of the board is that these flags be flown on certain holidays at the Vietnam Veterans Park, preferably Veterans Day and Memorial Day each year. And I'll coordinate with Londa Strong to give these flags to her so that they can be flown at the park. If that's okay with the board.
Sounds like a wonderful idea. Thank you for making that presentation to us.
Be quite welcome. Thank you for having me.
It was nice this past week when we had the veterans program before the Holler's event on Union Street, and it brought back a lot of memories of that great day in November when we were all very cold.
Oh, absolutely. It was much warmer Thursday.
As we sat, but thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you for having me.
Certainly something for us to be proud of.
Sure.
Thank you. And in the spirit of what Tim has just said, the next item on our agenda is a Memorial Day proclamation, which, which I will read at this time. Whereas across this great country, America, will join on May 25th, 2015, to honor her fallen heroes of the armed forces; and whereas Memorial Day was first proclaimed a national holiday in 1868 to pay homage to those who answered the call to defend the principles on which our nation was founded; and whereas throughout the course of generations, both at home and on foreign soil, men and women in uniform have sacrificed for the promise of freedom, the preservation of our values, and the ideals of democracy; and whereas men and women in uniform have paid for our liberty with their lives, we hold in remembrance their selfishness, selflessness with deepest honor and respect, and are indebted to their memories for the valiant and honorable path of service they followed; and whereas we share in the sorrow with and express our support to the families who also sacrificed greatly for their fellow citizens as they gave up their sons and daughters to serve our country and to search for a day when peace will abound. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Memorial Day, May 25th, 2015, in recognition of the men and women in uniform who have made the supreme sacrifice, and further urge all citizens to pause for a moment of silence at noon on May 25th, 2015, to honor and reflect on the memory of our fallen heroes of the armed forces. And upon approval, this will be adopted this 18th day of May, 2015. And do I hear a motion for approval of this proclamation?
I'll move for approval.
Of a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All oppose, no. And motion passes. And it certainly is important for us to remember what Memorial Day is not just a day off work. It has very significant meaning to it. We move now to the portion of our meeting where we accept informal public comments. I have this stack of yellow cards, folks that have filled them out. If anybody would like to speak and has not had an opportunity to fill out a card, I would encourage you to do that now. And so the first card is Crystal Swayze. And if you would speak into the microphone and state your name before you begin.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Crystal Swayze. I'm a resident of 4300 Deacon Court here in Concord, North Carolina. What I'm actually here to talk about is actually not to do necessarily with something you're doing, but something the local citizens of Cabarrus County are concerned with. In April, our representative Larry Pittman proposed a bill, Bill, House Bill 463. What concerns us is that, if those of you who don't know, House Bill 463 is a bill proposed by Mr. Pittman to increase the level of our commissioners, as well as make it an electoral district. With that proposed district, that is going to take away our rights to vote for five commissioners, as we are currently hold right now. He has proposed six district commissioners with one at-large commissioner. For example, with me, at a resident of 4300 Deacon Court, I would be able to vote for my one district electoral commissioner and my one at-large commissioner. As the proposed bill stands right now, he is taking away my right to vote for all of you. You all represent our whole community, our whole county. That, to me, is unfair. With that being said, I started a petition, and at this present, we have 112 signatures. It started at 10 o'clock last night. Since 10 o'clock last night, we've had 112 signatures. I have a copy of that printed as of 5:00 PM with 104 of them with their comments. What it reads is the following. "As a citizen of Cabarrus County, I respectfully, respectfully ask the members of the North Carolina House of Representatives to vote no to proposed House Bill H463. Representative Larry Pittman submitted this bill without consent or consideration to Representative Carl Ford, Representative Linda Johnson, our county commissioner, and our citizens. I do not support H463 for the following reasons. In proposed House Bill 463, only Representative Larry Pittman proposed to increase the membership of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners and to provide for six electoral districts and one at-large district. He did this without the consent of our other county representatives, county commissioners, and citizens. The Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners nor the citizens of Cabarrus County were made aware of this proposal until March 13th, 2015. At this meeting, it was agreed upon by Representative Pittman and our county commissioners that any proposed bill would wait until the public had a chance to be made aware of such a proposal and get community input and feedback. Did we get community input or feedback? No, we did not. H463 would limit our ability to vote on all county commissioners. We ask that H463 be removed so that all residents and representatives of Cabarrus County have an opportunity to have input and to decide as a community if we want to increase our county commissioners. This would allow us the time to have a community input as to whether electoral district-based elections is right for our community, or if our county commissioner should be increased based on the current at-large district. This is not a decision that needs to be made outside of this county, nor in Raleigh. It needs to be made right here. We request that you vote no to HB463 so that you give our citizens the time to make this very important governmental decision within our county lines. If H463 is passed, as is, you will take away our voting rights based on the proposed bill submitted by one of our four state representatives. We request this time so that the residents of Cabarrus County can have a say in the future of our community and not be forced into something by one man. We respectfully ask the members of the North Carolina House of Representatives to vote no to proposed bill, House 463. We thank you for your service and time in this matter." Thank you. As again I said, I'm very passionate about this community. I'm very passionate about what you do to serve our community, and I don't want our rights taken away by something like this out of Raleigh.
Thank you.
Can I give this to you?
I'll pass this to our clerk to be entered in the record.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Next is Missy De Souza.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Missy De Souza, and I live on Coach House Place in Concord, and I am here also to speak about that House bill. I just want to take a moment to concur with my fellow citizens here in attendance that I am also concerned with our representative in Raleigh taking it upon himself to introduce a bill to change a system which isn't necessarily broken without the input of our local citizens and government to make this decision. This is our call, and not enough time nor public education has been put into something that is so important. We and you deserve better. Raleigh should not be making our decisions. Thank you. That's all I needed to say.
Thank you very much. Next is Anita Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, and county staff. I appreciate the time to speak. This is going to sound a little redundant because my friends in the community and I have similar concerns. We are all well aware of Representative Pittman's proposal to change the number of county commissioners and to move to a district representation process. However, I am not aware of any public explanation clarifying the need for such a change and how it may impact or improve our local county governance. If you've read anything related to this proposal, you know Representative Pittman has spent his time defending his action and accusing our current commissioners, you, of not seeking public input regarding this plan for self-serving reasons. Of course, he previously stated that he would not file this bill this year, then filed it anyway, giving no time for public input. His rationale is that people from whom he solicited input, by his own admission, the readers of his newsletter, supported this filing. Whether you support the plan, some aspects of the plan, or none of the plan, it is clear that little or no time has been given to the education of the public regarding the plan and its intended or unintended consequences. Clearly, there needs to be adequate public information and conversation before any proposal and its consequences are moved forward, or any recommendation for action is sent forward. The residents of Cabarrus County must have the opportunity to weigh in on this or any other issue that can have the impact on our community that this would have for years to come. Many of our current community leaders and elected officials have stated clear satisfaction with the current configuration of county leadership. I might add that our current elected county leadership has brought a high degree of integrity, cooperative spirit, thoughtfulness, and inclusiveness to the governance of this county. Before any move is recommended, our citizens deserve to have full knowledge of the impact and the need for this change. Once again, we should urge Representative Pittman to withdraw his bill, and I thank you for your support of this activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Grant Rader.
I guess I'll add to the redundancy. My name is Grant Rader. I live in Kannapolis, Cabarrus County portion. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, and members of the staff, I'm also here to speak about HB463, Larry Pittman's efforts to revise our, our makeup of our commission. First and foremost, this is an issue that should be made locally, as the others have said, not in Raleigh. It shouldn't be a dictation by Raleigh. It's the other way around, where we ask them for approval to do something, not them telling us what to do. The previous county board of commissioners were creating a chaotic situation, to say the least, ending sensible functions, such as the county landfill, the Lumax Incubator Farm, reducing staff at the library, refusing to even discuss incentives to bring business and jobs to the community. We literally had a "closed-for-business" sign on the door. Many of the layoffs required by their actions were critical, were critical employees in their severance packages and other requirements would actually have cost the county money rather than the savings that they were looking for. In the last elections, the voters voted their displeasure of their actions by removing them from office, excuse me, and replacing them with more common-sense conservative commissioners. Now that Pittman's followers have also been replaced on the county GOP Executive Committee, they have lost their platform to force their extreme ideas. Pittman has proposed this bill seemingly out of spite that would force the current commissioners to run against each other in future elections. His proposal of district layouts have no relationship to municipal boundaries, but simply caused chaos for the county board. Furthermore, after assuring our county commissioners, you guys, that he would not file this bill until the voters had a chance to read and understand it, he was untruthful as he immediately went to Raleigh and filed it anyway. This is a bad bill, accomplishes nothing of a positive nature, and will likely cause warring factions in the county. This is a proposed, proposed solution to a nonexistent problem. We have an excellent group of five currently serving on the county board of commissioners who are working together and reaching out to all corners of the county to ensure an open line of communication that we all, that all voices are heard. If you see Pittman's followers asking you to sign a petition in favor of this bill, please walk away. Please do sign the petition that opposes this sham of a bill, and let's move forward for the betterment of the citizens of our county. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next is Michael Fisher.
My name is Michael Fisher. I was born and raised in Cabarrus County, and I currently live in Concord. I would like to take this opportunity to state my opposition to House Bill 463, which I understand would expand the size of this board and create districts that would divide Cabarrus County's citizens. There may be some merit to increasing the size of this board, given the tremendous growth that Cabarrus County has experienced during my own lifetime. However, I believe the scheme to create districts is the wrong approach for our community. I see two main problems with House Bill 463. First, by creating artificial districts across Cabarrus County, this bill will foster bad government. When you have districts, politicians are incentivized to pander to the narrow interests of their narrowly drawn districts. What's worse, commissioners elected under this district scheme would govern with the interests of these narrowly drawn districts in mind, to the detriment of our entire community. Our community is best served when our leaders consider the needs of our entire community when grappling with important policy choices. Second, narrowly drawn districts will make it harder to get rid of ineffective leaders. We all know that local elections are often low-turnout events. Political leaders are kept honest by facing judgment at the ballot box. Political leaders are kept honest by facing judgment at the ballot box. By reducing the size of the electorate, we increase the risk that ineffective leaders, who might be nonetheless popular with a tiny sliver of Cabarrus County citizens, will be elected and reelected. In years past, our community has been divided too many times, as we all know. We need to ensure that our choices going forward bring our community together. As citizens of Cabarrus County, we deserve a voice in choosing leaders who will make decisions for our entire community. You know, it's telling that only one Cabarrus County legislator supports House Bill 463. I commend the rest of the Cabarrus delegation for their good judgment in not supporting this divisive bill, and I commend the county commissioners for giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns. I add my voice to the growing chorus of concerned citizens who oppose House Bill 463. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's all the cards that we have tonight. Next item is old business, and I think Jonathan Marshall has a presentation about property matter.
Thank you. This is a piece of tax-foreclosed property located at 132 Fort Worth Avenue. Before it could go on the website we currently use to auction those, we had an offer to purchase that the commissioners accepted to consider, and that went through an upset bid process and advertisement period. For 10 days, we did not receive an upset bid, so that process is closed. So we recommend that you motion to award 132 Fort Worth Avenue property to Mr. Donald Watson for the price he attended, and authorize the county manager and county attorney to finalize the transaction and execute related documents.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for Mr. Marshall? If not, do I hear a motion as suggested?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Okay, and that motion would be to award the 132-Fort Worth property to Mr. Donald Watson and to authorize the county manager and county attorney to finalize the transaction and execute related documentation. Is that to your approval?
Yeah, I didn't say all that, because Jonathan did, but that's the motion I'm making for approval.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is our consent agenda, which you all have before you, and includes items that were discussed at our agenda work session. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. And we move on to new business. First item on our agenda is economic development grant request for Project Toby, and I think Patrick Coughlin is going to talk with us about that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Coughlin. I'm President and CEO of the Cabarrus Regional Chamber and Economic Development Corporation. I thank you for this opportunity to be with you this evening and bring to you an economic development project. Before we present to you the opportunity this evening, I did want to give a little bit of background for you, for those who are here and for those who are watching, so that they can understand the context under which we're presenting this this evening. I was pleased to see the mission of Cabarrus County and the vision printed on the agenda. We at the Chamber and the Economic Development Corporation bring everything we do back to our mission and vision. And at the EDC, our mission is to work with local existing businesses and to work with new companies coming to this area so that we can increase the amount of capital investment, so that we can create more and diversify jobs in the county, so we can plan for the expansion of infrastructure, and do all of that so that we create a very robust economy here. So we do that. We accomplish our mission by focusing in three areas: product development, existing business and industry, and recruitment. Product development is the cornerstone of what we do. It's one of the most important things that we do, because think about this: if a company wants to expand, and there's no greenfield for them to build a building, or if a new company wants to come here and there's no building to put them in, we're going to miss that opportunity. So product development is about making sure we have adequate sites that are zoned appropriately, and making sure we have adequate buildings to locate existing companies and new companies here. So our request this evening is actually under product development. We have an opportunity today to create something that doesn't exist right now, that will help an existing company expand or will help us attract a new company here. So to tell you a little bit more about that opportunity, I'd like to introduce Samantha Grass, who is our project manager at the EDC, to give you some details.
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening. I am Samantha Grass, project manager for Cabarrus EDC. Commissioners, I want to first just thank you for the opportunity to present this information to you tonight. The Silverman Group is proposing another spec development here in Cabarrus County. The proposed 108,000-square-foot building would be constructed on a 12-acre parcel on Aviation Boulevard with an estimated investment of $7 million. The spec building will have the same quality look and design as other products they have built in Concord. The building will be a Class A flex facility that can be subdivided down to 30,000-square-foot increments. Their investment exceeds the minimum requirements of the performance grant. We have also included in your packet of information a Cabarrus County grant analysis based on that estimated investment of $7 million. A three-year, 85% grant is $124,950. On May 14th, Concord City Council approved a three-year, 85% performance grant, and we are asking for you to consider the same, a three-year, 85% grant as well. We would be happy to answer any questions that you have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions for Patrick or Samantha? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on. We have advertised a public hearing on this matter, so at this time, I would like to open the public hearing and entertain anybody that would like to speak in regards to this Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and at this time, open the floor for discussion on this matter. I will start off the discussion with just one thing. You know, I think a lot of times when we talk about economic development grants, we talk about the amount of the grant over a period of time. The thing that we don't talk about as much is the increased revenue that will be realized by the county. On this particular project, during the three-year period of the grant, the county will see net additional revenues of $22,000. Beginning the fourth year, we will recognize that year and every year thereafter, $49,000 in additional tax revenue as a result of this project. I think if we look back at the other projects that the Silverman Group has done near this location, that is where we got Amazon in Cabarrus County, as one example, and several other businesses. So the figures that I'm throwing out are just the figures for the physical building. It does not include the businesses that will locate in those buildings. So I am very much in favor of this, and I would make a motion that we approve this economic development grant request for Project Toby, and would be happy to hear a second.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is from Cabarrus County Schools, funding request for design and construction contract administrative services for the replacement of Royal Oaks Elementary School, and we're happy to have Tim Louder with us to talk about that.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. Ladies and gentlemen, the commission and the staff, I'm going to represent the Cabarrus County Schools. As you may be aware, on April 13th, the Cabarrus County School Board approved the replacement of Royal Oaks Elementary School to be built on the Royal Oaks existing site, at which time, obviously, we need to enter into some architectural and design services to make that project a success. At this time, I would like to request the funding for that, and they also approved that request for funding. I'm bringing it to you tonight, and we hope that you would have a positive consideration of our funding level of $950,500 so we can enter into this contract to begin design services.
Great. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Louder?
Mr. Chairman, I only have just one question, and it's just for clarity. Tim, what's going to be the capacity of this school?
The core capacity is 800, but it's 648 students, which is about twice the capacity of its current level.
Okay, so I'm assuming that we're going to pull some students from some of the surrounding elementary schools?
Yes, sir. Upon completion, it would require some redistricting to allow us to fill those seats in anticipation there would be a major growth in some of the areas around Bogar and so forth in that area to build.
And just one final question, if I may, and that is, are we going to be able to use any of the structures on that site now?
Yes, sir. Our intent is to retain the 1998 structure that was built as part of that expansion that we did back in 1998, I think, Grace and I were on the school board back then in 1998. We intend to use that and probably bring that into as a pre-K portion of this project, which in this community is greatly needed.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Louder?
I don't have a question for Tim. Thank you very much for being here. Congratulations on your new position with the school system. So far, our interactions with you, you've shown that you have great knowledge about design and construction and all the utilities, and so it's been quite pleasant to get information from you, so I wanted to say that. The voters of Cabarrus County approved the bond referendum to cover replacing Royal Oaks Elementary School. It's a school that definitely needs to be replaced, and I'm extremely happy that the voters said that we needed to move forward on this project. So, Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to make a motion that we approve the funding for design and construction as requested by Cabarrus County Board of Education.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you.
Very much. Look forward to being here before you for a long time to come.
Great. We hope so. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is a resolution regarding Senate Bill 369. This is the bill involving changes by the state of North Carolina in sales tax distribution. It's rather lengthy, but I think maybe it might be important to read it. This would be entitled "Resolution by the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Regarding Senate Bill 369. Whereas Senators Harry Brown, Brent Jackson, and Ben Clark have filed and sponsored Senate Bill 369 titled 'A Bill to be Entitled An Act to Phase In the Conversion of the Local Sales and Use Taxes Authorized Under Articles 39, 40, and 42 to a State Sales and Use Tax That is Allocated to the Counties and Cities on a Per-Capita Basis as a Local Revenue Source.' And whereas since enactment, sales taxes in North Carolina have been a primary funding source for the municipalities and counties of the state, and considered the property of those local governments who provide the resources and infrastructure to generate the sales taxes, and whereas historically, the majority of sales taxes have been distributed on a point-of-delivery basis, due in large part to the fairness of the concept that those who pay for the infrastructure supporting sales should be entitled to collect the tax spawned by their investment. And whereas Senate Bill 369 has the stated purpose of taking revenues away from the place where they were generated and redistributing it to counties and municipalities that are less prosperous areas, and whereas in doing so, the legislation provides a windfall to local governments who have not provided the resources and infrastructure necessary to generate significant sales taxes for their local community by taking it from the local governments whose communities and budgets bear the physical and fiscal brunt of the cost of development. In effect, the legislation proposes to socialize sales tax revenues and redistribute them under the guise of fairness. And whereas the taking of an asset statutorily vested in the local governments of North Carolina and redistributing it on the basis of a currently perceived fairness will be financially devastating to Cabarrus County and its towns, as well as a majority of counties and municipalities in the state, forcing them to make up the difference by increasing ad valorem taxes. Gifting the sales tax revenues on a per-capita distribution is tantamount to a tax increase mandated by the legislature. And whereas this legislation not only proposes to strip local governments of a statutorily vested funding source and mandate it to recover those revenues elsewhere, it proposes to further effectively increase county set-aside requirements for public school capital outlays. And whereas despite the text of Senate Bill 369 stating "The governor may not reduce or withhold the distribution to local government," the legislation will convert the local sales tax to a state sales tax by funneling it into the state's general fund, which threatens future distributions to local governments, just as has occurred with lottery proceeds, as well as the beer and wine taxes. And whereas ultimately, this conversion of the local sales tax to a state sales tax under the guise of fairness is in fact unfair and a fundamental change in the way government is financed in North Carolina. Now therefore be it resolved by the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners that the passing of Senate Bill 369 threatens to take over $6 million in sales tax revenue from Cabarrus County annually, and that the proposed legislation is far from fair, but rather it burdens the citizens of Cabarrus County and its municipalities, and that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners adamantly opposes Senate Bill 369 and any similar legislation that threatens the status and distribution of local sales and use taxes. And it is hereby requested that the local delegation of the North Carolina General Assembly elected to represent the interests of the citizens of Cabarrus County and its municipalities vigorously oppose Senate Bill 369 and any similar bill filed in the House. The commissioners shall seek the support of the municipalities of Concord, Harrisburg, Kannapolis, Locust, Midland, and Mount Pleasant, and numerous volunteer fire departments to join in this resolution or adopt similar resolutions. And so that is the resolution. Before us, Commissioners, do I hear a motion to take action on this?
Move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would like to add to clarify that last line about the volunteer fire department. I would like to add, to clarify that last line about the volunteer fire departments. Currently, Cabarrus County uses some of the sales tax revenue is distributed to our local volunteer fire departments around the county. With this action, that amount of money will no longer go to the local volunteer fire departments who use it as part of their budget. So, they would have a hole in their budget also, as a result, and needless to say, they would need to come to find another way to raise those funds to plug the hole that this would cause for them. So I wanted to point out that not only does Cabarrus County lose money, the city of Concord loses a similar amount, and all of our volunteer fire departments would lose funds, and this is not, should not happen. I mean, it's not, as you said, it's not a fair bill to the counties who have invested in infrastructure, who have been able to bring facilities such as Concord Mills to our county to then redistribute that money outside. A lot of infrastructure has gone into that area, and more will be going into that area over the next few years. But I did want to make sure everybody understood about the volunteer fire departments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Very succinctly, and I don't remember the person, famous person's quote, but he said, "Anytime that you try to make the weak stronger, you make the strong weaker."
Right. I think that is an appropriate comment. I was at a meeting earlier today where the mayor of Kannapolis was talking about the devastating impact this proposal, if passed, would have on them. You mentioned the city of Concord. You know, it goes across our county. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, no. And that motion passes to support that resolution. We're going to deviate from our agenda just a little bit. Number four is presentation of the budget. We're going to move that down to the bottom. And first, consider a resolution supporting Governor McCrory's bond proposal, which was an addition to our agenda, and I will read that proposed resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Supporting Governor McCrory's Bond Proposal." Whereas Governor McCrory has proposed a $2.85 billion bond purposed for investment in the state of North Carolina's infrastructure to strengthen and support the needs of transportation, public health, education, technology, parks, ports, and military operations. And whereas in his proposal, Governor McCrory dedicates $1.48 billion to 101 infrastructure projects in 64 counties, and $1.37 billion to 203 highway and paving projects in 57 counties across North Carolina, creating substantial short-term and long-term growth through projects enhancing North Carolina's readiness for economic growth. And whereas among the projects in his bond proposal, there are significant investments in Cabarrus County and its neighboring counties. And whereas in his proposal, Governor McCrory dedicated $7 million to improvements at the Reed Gold Mine State Historic Site, both a landmark and an important piece of Cabarrus County history that should be maintained and preserved for future generations. And whereas also in his proposal, Governor McCrory dedicated $17 million to the George Lyles Parkway Extension Project to improve connectivity and accessibility while meeting key transportation needs in Cabarrus County. And whereas North Carolina has a history of using long-term financing to meet infrastructure needs, and it is considered prudent to invest when current rates are at historic lows. And whereas the bond proposal does not require a tax increase and is well within the state's debt affordability as determined by the state treasurer and the Nonpartisan Debt Affordability Committee. And whereas 15 years have passed since the state's last general obligation bond was authorized for the improvement of public infrastructure, resulting in years of statewide deferred maintenance. Now therefore be it resolved by the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners hereby supports the addition of Governor McCrory's general obligation bond proposal to the November 2015 ballot, and that would be adopted this 18th day of May 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion that we approve this proclamation.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
No.
Okay. And we have a second. Is there discussion?
Yes, sir. We all know the history, those of us that have been here for a long time, in my case, a lifetime, we know what's going on in Cabarrus County as far as economic development goes. The Mills are no longer here. Philip Morris is no longer here. And the thing that sustained Cabarrus County during the Great Recession has been tourism. And we should all be very thankful for all the traffic that is currently out on Exit 49. I've been fairly creative on how to get around some of that traffic, but I am, as much as I hate the traffic, I am extremely thankful for those people who come here right now for the 10 days of racing in Cabarrus County. Tourism is what has kept us alive. This particular bond package includes money for Reed Gold Mine State Historic Site, $7 million, and that's tourism. And it's also educational for our students in the county that go there, and for the visitors that go there who are hoping to find that gold nugget when they pan for gold out there. The other thing, there's been a lot of discussion, as you all know, I am on the Cabarrus Rowan MPO Board, which is, I like to call, the Roads and Bridges Group. We've had a lot of conversations about Exit 49, about the widening of I-85, and the other projects that have been going on in Cabarrus County and our neighboring counties. One of the things that I have spoken with Governor McCrory about, he's probably tired of it because every time he sees me, I remind him that George Lyles was a very good mayor, and a very good mayor needs a road that goes all the way to 49. So if you see the governor, you're welcome to take, use that line. He will know where it came from, because I tell him that every time I see him. To have a connecting road from 49 to 29 to 85 is huge. As you all know, we have the Arena and Event Center, and, I don't know, the Speedway's in the way. If you want to have a direct shot, you have to go Moorhead, which was closed for a number of months, now back open, but seems to be having to make a turn makes it a little bit harder to get to that site. This particular extension project would connect 85 all the way through. It would be very helpful for the Arena and Event Center. It would open up all three of those roads, and would be a very good economic impact in Cabarrus County. So, I would encourage our citizens to look at this proposal and to seriously consider it when it's on the ballot. We, sadly, we typically do things because it impacts us directly, and this bond does impact us directly, and it will make a difference in Cabarrus County, and I appreciate that the governor has included these two projects in this particular bond proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yeah, I certainly agree with all the points that you made. Of course, this resolution is encouraging it to be placed on the ballot, which there seems to be some discussion. There are some folks that would like to see it go on the ballot, and others that would not. So, we are merely encouraging them to place it on the ballot so that the voters will have an opportunity to express their desires on it. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. And tonight is a night of resolutions. Our next item is "Resolution Supporting North Carolina's Historic Preservation Tax Credit Programs," and this is also, was an addition to our agenda, and I will read that resolution as well. Entitled "A Resolution Supporting North Carolina's Historic Preservation Tax Credit Programs." Whereas Cabarrus County, along with other local and regional partners, supports the revitalization of historic downtown Concord and downtown Kannapolis, to establish them as vital economic sectors for the benefit of the community. And whereas Cabarrus County realizes that a healthy, vibrant downtown overflows to make other economic development initiatives in the community easier to achieve. And whereas Cabarrus County understands it is important to retain a wealth of historic, commercial, and residential structures that offer unique opportunities by differentiating our community from others and by preserving our own unique history and culture. Therefore, we wish to preserve those structures for future use and reinvestment. And whereas Cabarrus County recognizes that these buildings offer opportunities for small business development, job creation, and desirable living spaces in an environment with previously invested infrastructure. And whereas the rehabilitation of historic structures is challenging in terms of acquiring needed bank financing, meeting building code regulations, and overcoming general risk of unknown conditions, and securing private investment. And whereas Cabarrus County recognizes that these programs offer an often necessary financial tool that level the private investment risks and opportunities when competing for sites outside the built area, and also provide leverage needed to meet financial gaps experienced with traditional lending institutions. And whereas Cabarrus County and its municipalities have experienced success with meeting these historic rehabilitation challenges due to the availability of the North Carolina Historic Preservation Tax Credit Programs, which resulted in positive private investment projects that support our local economy. Now therefore be it resolved, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners hereby supports the North Carolina Historic Preservation Tax Credit Programs and their continued availability as a tool to spur economic recovery and growth in the downtown areas of our community. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be submitted and shared with surrounding counties and municipalities to encourage support of our position to maintain the North Carolina Historic Preservation Tax Credit Programs for continued availability to those interested in reinvesting in our historic structures. So commissioners, do I hear a motion regarding this resolution?
Move for approval.
Have a motion for approval and a second. Is there discussion?
Just wanted to add that I didn't hear it in the motion itself, but so often, historic, the credits that are given to people to restore a historic building can affect not just that building, but everything around it. And I think in particular, one of my favorite ones that I've talked in public about before is the old Concord High School. If that could be restored, that entire area around that building will probably become attractive to individuals and people who want to restore that area as well. And so that's another facet of this that I think is key. It's not giving anybody any money, it's just aiding them in investing their money, and we see other advantages as well come along with their investment.
Right. Thank you. Other discussion?
I believe that there is funding in the House budget that was presented today. I don't know if it went out today, or if it went out over the weekend, but I believe there is some funding in the House version, and it's my understanding that Senator Hartzell is supportive of this. The question is what's going to happen in the Senate when they have their chance at the budget. But I would hope, not only with that building, but also with Concord Hotel, the old furniture building behind that did receive historic tax credits. Of course, we know that downtown Kannapolis, there are a number of locations there that would be beneficial to have this back in place, so I think it's a good thing for us to be proactive in this regard.
Great. Thank you. Other discussion? I will add that it was my privilege to share the stage with Governor McCrory and Secretary Susan Klutz last week to talk about these tax credits. You know, I have personally been involved in a project in another county where these tax credits were used, and it was the difference between preserving this historic building and bulldozing it down. It makes that big of a difference. And one of the things that I pointed out last week in speaking at that press conference, and I have, by the way, this is the second time that both Governor McCrory and Secretary Klutz have visited Cabarrus County to talk about these tax credits. But, you know, when I have my county commissioner hat on, you know, I think about the tax revenue that has been generated by many of these structures, many for 80 or 100 years, and what that has meant to our tax base here in Cabarrus County. But when we talk with, when we talk with individuals out in the community, they don't talk so much about the taxes that have been generated, they talk about the memories that have been generated, and how important some of these structures have been to them. So when explained to them, they certainly see the value in what these investment tax credits accomplish. So, I certainly am very much in favor of it. Any further discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is presentation of the proposed fiscal year 16 budget, and I will turn the floor over to County Manager Downs.
Thank you. I am, just for the purpose of the audience, I will read the budget message tonight. We are distributing the budget to the board. And then following this, the public meetings, the board will have two budget sessions on Tuesday, May 26th, and Thursday, May 28th, and then again at their work session on June 1st, with the ultimate approval on June 15th, will be the public hearing for the budget itself. For the board members, if you want to follow along, I don't think it's in your, on your slides here, it is in your notebooks there. Honorable Chairman and members of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, I am delighted to submit to you the recommended Cabarrus County operating budget for FY16. The budget as submitted is prepared in accordance with the General Statutes of North Carolina and the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. The mission, vision, and action plan of the Board of Commissioners has continued to provide valuable structure and direction in the preparation of this balanced budget. County staff initiated the FY16 budget process in November of 2014, when staff reviewed programs and services for effectiveness and efficiency. Where appropriate, some of these findings are proposed for implementation in the upcoming budget. As in previous years, the construction of the proposed budget allows for appropriate funding of mandated functions of county government, as well as the programs and services expected by our citizens. It is my recommendation that the Board of Commissioners consider a general operating budget in the amount of $218,657,209 for the FY16, which represents a 4.3 increase in spending from the FY15 adopted budget. The proposed budget meets the current departmental needs and future needs of the county by maintaining an existing or lower levels of spending in most departments, while providing additional supplements to areas with increased service demands. The plan also addresses growth within the school's capital and current expenses, and plans for their future needs. This proposed budget maintains the current 70 cent tax rate. Short-term and economic and operational impacts on the county budget. The national, state, and local economies continue to experience positive economic growth, which is estimated to increase ad valorem and sales tax revenues by $8,657,800. growth, which is estimated to increase ad valorem and sales tax revenues by $8,657,878 in fiscal year 16. We project 1.7% growth in ad valorem taxes and 3% growth in sales taxes when you compare projected actual FY15 to projected budget FY16. While our projections meet statutory requirements and conform to the projected range of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, our staff continues to remain conservative in our approach to project for budgeting purposes. Although North Carolina counties have collectively requested that the state legislature reinstate lottery proceeds for school capital needs to their original percentages, this has not taken place. Therefore, counties will have to continue to fund projects with a larger proportion of local funds, which negatively impacts available funds for the counties and our schools' current expenses. Cabarrus County continues to prosper as one of the nation's fastest-growing counties. The 2014 census noted that our population is now 192,103 people, making Cabarrus the 11th most populated county in the state of North Carolina. The county continues to increase in residential, commercial, and industrial growth. Because of this growth, the Register of Deeds Office and the Planning and Development Office have experienced an increase in activity. Over the last year and in FY16, the county has added several code enforcement officers to meet the demand of the new activity and to keep the building industry on schedule. The unemployment rate in the county has continued to drop to its current level of 4.9%, which means we still have citizens out of work or underemployed. To address this issue, our economic and workforce development initiatives must continue in a positive direction. Our work to keep Cabarrus County a competitive community will allow our existing businesses to prosper and provides an attractive location and a ready workforce for companies wanting to expand or to locate. Operation and capital needs of Cabarrus County Schools, Kannaple City Schools, and Rowan Cabarrus Community College continue to demand additional funding. Charter schools within the county are growing and receive county funding for their current operating expenses as well. All of these have projected increased enrollments and funding needs. The governor and the state legislature prefer to fund Phase II of their initiative to increase the base salary of new school teachers to $35,000 per year. The proposed budget includes the fiscal impact of this initiative and the recommended merit increases for locally paid school employees. The county has divested operations of two programs to the private sector, which allows for the reallocation of those staff to address growing program needs such as economic services and emergency medical services. The two programs are the Community Alternative Program, which are CAP, and the Non-Emergency Transportation Program. The county continues to evaluate programs and services to determine their effectiveness and the best method of delivery to our citizens. Currently, there are two bills under consideration in the North Carolina Senate, both of which propose a new formula for the sales tax distribution. If either of these bills become law, it will have a negative impact on the county's budget. Both propose to redistribute sales tax revenues throughout the 100 counties on a per capita basis rather than the current point-of-sale system. FY16 budget highlights priorities and issues. The Board of Commissioners has identified four focus areas that are important to them and Cabarrus County. One, transportation, connectivity, and mobility. Two, programs, funding, and services. Three, planning, growth, and economic development. Four, communications and education. Accordingly, the staff and funding levels will target these areas in the FY16 budget and beyond. New positions are recommended to meet the demands of our growing county and the expectations of our citizens for staff to provide effective and efficient services. Public safety, construction standards, human services, information technology, and communications are functions with additional staffing proposals. Increased capital and current expense funding in the amount of $3,210,000 for our schools is proposed to address the demands of a growing enrollment, technology needs, and the combination of needs for more facilities and maintenance of an aging inventory of buildings. However, the county will need to take on additional debt to fund several new schools and an increasing amount of maintenance and repair projects that were deferred over the last several years. The county is working with the schools to present a detailed plan of deferred maintenance and current facility needs and how to address them in the future. Proposed staffing and operational hours for the Emergency Medical Services Department addresses the increased number of calls and the staff's stress and fatigue in responding to those calls daily. These changes will include moving from a 24-hour shift to a 12-hour shift. The transition will take place over the two fiscal years, 75% occurring in FY16 and 25% occurring in FY17. The community paramedic program is also recommended to provide our citizens with an additional level of care as they return home after stays in the hospital and begin their recovery process. Funding and staffing of our library system to ensure that our branches remain open six full days a week. The county has completed compensation studies in an effort to bring employee salaries to a level appropriate and competitive in the market from which the county recruits. Additional funds based on the results of these studies are included in the recommended Increased funding to the Health Insurance Fund, the Employee Health Insurance Fund, in the amount of $1.3 million is needed to restore the full cost of employee benefits. Cabarrus County is trending in a positive manner. Residential, commercial, and industrial development continues to improve. Our population seems to increase daily. Our unemployment rate is down to 4.9%. There are many other positive things moving forward in the county. However, even with positive growth, brings with it challenges and opportunities that we must address financially and operationally. The proposed budget meets these challenges and takes advantage of the positive opportunities that have presented. In closing, I would like to thank our entire staff for their continued commitment to provide the very best services to the citizens of our county in the most efficient manner. It is only through their determination and commitment that we are able to carry out the Board of Commissioners' mission, vision, and goals for a growing and prospering community. I would like to thank specifically Pam Dubois, our Senior Deputy County Manager, Susan Farrington, our Finance Director, Kristin Owens, our Budget Analyst, Becky Crabtree, a Budget Analyst, and Jonathan Marshall, our Deputy County Manager, and Lundie Covington, our Human Resources Director, for their time and effort throughout the last six months in preparing this budget. Respectfully submitted, Michael K. Downs, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Downs. I tell you, any of you that have followed our meetings over the past year would realize that there's nothing in this budget message that comes as a surprise to anybody, because we have, certainly all of the commissioners as well as the staff, have had extensive discussions at our orientation sessions, our workshops, and when we've met with others talking about different parts of this budget. As the County Manager mentioned, we will have budget workshops. We have three of those scheduled. I would encourage anybody that's watching at home or that's with us tonight to attend any or all of those sessions. If you have questions or things that you don't understand as we go through all parts of that budget, and then we will certainly have opportunity for public comment in favor of, opposed to, to speak your mind as to how you feel about it during that process. So we want that to be as open and transparent and public as possible, and we want to know what folks think about it and how they feel about it as we try to make good decisions about it. Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to make regarding the budget at this time?
I just want to echo what you said, and I also want to agree with our County Manager. Our staff works extremely hard to get this budget prepared for us. They've taken input that all the commissioners have given them during our various meetings that we've had. I'm looking forward to the budget meetings, which is kind of odd for somebody to say, but I'm always amazed at the amount of work that our staff puts into this document and how they continually strive to take what's available, the funds that are available, and put them to good use and best uses to meet the needs. Our staff has worked very hard with our school systems, and I want to commend those groups and the Community College and all the entities that we fund for working so well with our staff to make sure that the things that they need can be addressed. So I'm looking forward to these meetings next week, and I just want to say thank you very much, because I know how much work you put into it. You guys don't always get as many accolades as you deserve, so I'll say it now before we get into the meat of it, but thank you all very much.
So, thank you.
And you need a motion to schedule a public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd make a motion that we schedule a public hearing on proposed fiscal year 16 Cabarrus County budget for Monday, June 15th, 2015, at 6:30 PM or as soon thereafter as persons may be heard.
Great. Thank you. We have a motion to schedule a public hearing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Just one additional comment. You know, as we travel and meet with commissioners from other counties across the state, usually when we sit down at a table to have a discussion, one of the first things that, the first question that's asked is, what would you view as the greatest challenge in your county right now? And my answer is always, very quickly, our biggest challenge is dealing with the growth that we're experiencing and how we continue to, how we fund school construction that's necessary, and all of the other things that come along with that growth. And it is quite a challenge for us. The answer almost immediately that comes back from one of the other counties is, gosh, I wish we had that kind of problem. You know, we're dealing with a shrinking population, and in our county, we're having to decide which of the two high schools we're going to close. We have to close one of them. So folks, we're very, very lucky to live where we do, and Cabarrus County is a great place and a lot of really positive things going on. Next, we go to appointments to boards and committees. First is appointments and removals to the Cabarrus County Senior Citizens Advisory Council. And if I can get to the right page here. Resignations have been received from Rod Campani and Charles Mitchell. By resigning, they leave open two unexpired terms ending December 31st, 2017. It is requested that they be formally removed from the Cabarrus County Senior Citizens Advisory Council roster, and appointments be made to fill their vacancies. So I would entertain a motion that we remove these two individuals from the roster and thank them for their service.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes, and I would entertain a motion to appoint two individuals to fill those slots, and you have in your material before you a list of applications on file.
I would make a motion to appoint Margaret Dorton and Jerry Ann Phillips to the Cabarrus County Senior Center Advisory Council.
Okay, do I hear a second to that motion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is appointments and removal to the Library Board of Trustees. A resignation was received from Anne Holland. It is requested that Ms. Holland be formally removed from the Library Board of Trustees roster. Ms. Holland's resignation leaves a vacancy for a Midland representative with a term expiring July 31st, 2016. And we are encouraging Midland residents to apply for that vacancy. So I think the requested action tonight is to approve the removal, and then we will come back perhaps at our next meeting with a replacement for that. So do I hear a motion to accept the removal of Anne Holland?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next is, an application to serve on the Watershed Improvement Commission has been received from Thomas Smith. Commission member Armistead Eugene Devine has passed away. I think we recognized him at our last meeting. It is requested to remove his name from the roster and to replace the vacancy created by his death to be filled by Thomas Smith. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Move for approval.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next is appointments and removals for the Transportation Advisory Board. Tony Harris, Safety and Risk Manager, submitted his resignation to the Transportation Advisory Board due to his resignation from his position with Cabarrus County. An application for the Transportation Advisory Board has been received from Andy Yose, Cabarrus County Safety and Risk Coordinator. Mr. Yose is recommended to be appointed to complete the unexpired term for the County Safety Manager position. Do I hear a motion to approve that request?
So moved.
And a second? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. We have a number of reports that are included in your information, including updates from the Economic Development Corporation, building activity, a monthly financial update, and at this time, I would like to open the floor to receive updates from commission members who serve on various boards and committees. If anybody has anything they would like to report. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make the comment that I continue to be impressed with the efficiency of the Human Services Board and the work they're doing, all of those individuals. And I think we've recognized before that they have caught up on all the backlog of Medicaid applications and their current, and that's, everybody in the state cannot say that, and they have really worked overtime. And I find them continually trying to find ways to be more efficient and to deliver services more efficiently. So I'm very proud of that. The other thing that I just want to say is that some of us were at the Vietnam Veterans Day and haulers parade, and I got quite emotional over that. If that wasn't Norman Rockwell, I don't know what was. To have those two combined things, and I'm sure the photographs that come from that are very emotion-building, to have the people there waving the flags for the veterans, and then to see and hear those massive trucks coming down Union Street was quite an event. It was very emotional. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a very, very nice event. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to report on? If not, we'll move to general comments by board members. Anybody have anything they'd like to say? I would just like to mention one thing in regards to the, quite a few comments that we had in our public comment session about House Bill 463, which changes the makeup of this board. I just wanted to mention for a few minutes some of the things that we have done and some of the things that we plan to do to try to get public input on this bill. For those watching on television, if you did not hear in the public comment session, that bill would increase the size of this board from five members to seven members. It would also create six districts where six of the commissioners would It would also create six districts where six of the commissioners would be elected from their specific districts, and then we would have one commissioner at large that would be elected countywide. The, where, under the current setup, you vote for all five of your commissioners. Under this new setup, you would only be able to vote for two. You would vote for the one at-large position and the one from your district. In our discussion about this bill, we did make a commitment to seek public input on this, and we're, we're happy to have folks come and speak, speak at our meetings. We have in our meeting, our Cabarrus County Summit Meeting that we had a few weeks ago that included all the elected officials from all the municipalities. We talked about the bill there. We sought their input around the room, and, and, and we have compiled their responses as to how they felt about it. We had another meeting that I think actually the night before with a number of, of business interest in the community where we invited them to come in and, and tell us about the things that, that they were concerned about or to let us know what we could do better to, to, to help our businesses and, you know, basically just to get their input on, you know, kind of say, how are we doing? You know, are there some things that we aren't doing that we should be doing and vice versa? So we also discussed it with that group and sought their input as to how they felt about that bill. We have had discussions with our public information folks about some things that we can do as far as placing that on the front page of our website, encouraging people to participate in a survey that we will set up that will give opportunity, people, opportunity to go to this survey online and express their opinions there. We also plan to do some town hall meetings. We're going to try to do those. We may do some as coffees or get-togethers, but with those, when we can finalize those plans, those dates and dates, locations, and times will be publicized on our website through our conversations here as well. But that, that will just be some time that we'll set aside just to be available for folks to come in, express their opinion about that, and of course, any other topic that, that they would like to talk about as well. But, but we, takes us a little time to put, put these things together, but we feel it's important to hear what people think. My personal experience has been people have more questions than, than they do opinions. And then, then after they get their questions answered, because everybody doesn't understand exactly how it works, then, then that, that gives them the tools they need to, to make a decision as to how they feel about it. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to share? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to add what you just said. One of the things that I've heard is there is a possibility that the bill would be changed to call for a referendum to have citizens vote on whether or not they would approve of the current proposed plan. My concern with that would be, as with anything, it's all in how it's phrased. So I think it's very important for people to understand that the way that it is now, and I would presume if it was put for a referendum, it's very important for you to understand that you would get to vote for two people, which means that if you don't like me and you don't live in my neighborhood or my area that's been designated on there, there's not a thing you can do about it. And the other thing would be that it could be, because you and I, our terms are on the presidential cycle where you have more people come out to vote, it could be that if you, if, if that's, if I'm still on the same cycle and that the at-large seat is on that cycle, you get to vote in that election and you don't vote again for four more years. Or it could be that you're in a district that you vote for the at-large in one, and two years later you get to vote in your district level. And I think it's going to be very confusing because, and I've, I've had this before, as I think most people would know I'm a Republican, my uncle, who I absolutely love dearly, is a lifelong Democrat. And the last time that I was running in the primary, I, I was at the polling place and he came up and, and I said, you know, you're going to vote for me, aren't you? And he said, I can't vote for you, I'm a Democrat. And I looked at him and I said, I can't believe this. He said, well, you know, if you can get through this, I'll vote for you next time. But I can imagine that because of this, there are going to be people in the county that are not only going to say, wait a minute, I can't vote for you, but they're also going to say, I can't vote against you. And so I just think that, that, I think we're trying to be very proactive. I appreciate the speakers tonight. We never know who's going to come and speak until the yellow cards are filled out, so I appreciate that, and I think that it's important for us to make sure that we talk about the issue that's before us and how that is truly going to impact voting, and it will limit voting. And I think most of us could be a proponent of increasing opportunities to vote and to express your desires at the ballot box. So, but I think that we need to also keep, keep a watch to see if that gets changed to a referendum and how that referendum's going to be worded and what the actual districts are. Because staff members drew up the districts. You and I are currently slated in the same, and there's one district where you're also in that same district. So I think that's, you know, kind of interesting so that we, we need to keep a price of that, and I appreciate you bringing that out, and I appreciate the speakers that were here tonight.
Right. Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything? Yes, sir.
Chairman, I just wanted to bring up one other thing too, because it was mentioned tonight by one of the speakers where that, I don't know if it was Representative Pittman, it might have been some, it might have been an article in the letter to the editor was talking about that the current commissioners was against this because they didn't want, we were self-serving and we didn't want seven commissioners on our board. Well, you know, in that discussion that we had on March 13, I think it was, I don't think that this board, no one on this board expressed any problem with being seven commissioners on the board. The problem that we had was the districting, the district representation. And so, you know, to, you know, to come back on that comment, you know, about us being adamantly against it for self-serving reasons is totally wrong. Because if we had seven members on this board, it would surely lighten our load, which all of you will agree is it's heavy. Because I, I myself am liaison from other committees and municipalities, it just says that other board members are as well. And so it would. And I think that North Carolina does have population thresholds where that, you know, when you reach a certain number of population, then that number can be increased, but it's the local government's decision, not Raleigh's decision, you know, that kind of thing. And I've always tried to look at it like this, you know, just like the people of Cabarrus County put each one of us up here, and we, the people, put the representatives to go to Raleigh on our behalf, and when they go to Raleigh, they're supposed to act on our behalf. First, check with us to see what they can do to help us make Cabarrus County better and make things better for all of us versus coming up with ideas that come from Raleigh, bringing them down on our level and sort of pushing them off on us without any discussion. And that's basically what happened with this particular bill. And so I just wanted to be as honest and as plain about it as I can because there was no opposition from this board on the, the number of commissioners. It was only the districting, the way it was broke down, and how it was done, and the way the whole thing was presented. But that's all I have, Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, on this.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we do have a, the need for a closed session tonight, and so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel matter and discuss threatened or pending litigation per North Carolina General Statutes 143-318, 11A, 3 and 6. And we would be inviting Brent Weisner and Pam Dubois to join us. Do I hear such a motion? Have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And we stand adjourned. Thank you.